The reality is, is that if we're going to be tough on crime, we have to invest in the infrastructure to support the results of being tough on crime.
Clyde, good to see you again, sir.
Hey, it's great to see you, Matt. Thanks a lot.
So, we last spoke when you were running for Eagle Fire Commissioner, and you're back for the Ada County Commissioner. Talk to me about this. What, what do you want to bring to the race? What do you think you can offer the, the citizens of Ada County? What are your priorities?
So, yeah, so I have three priorities. But first of all, thank you for having me back. I appreciate it. I, I think that maybe means that I did okay the first time.
It wasn't too terrible.
Okay, enough anyway, right? Yeah, so, so I want to work on three things, or I think there should be three priorities for the county. First one is taxes. We all say that taxes are too high, but taxes are a very complicated issue. And what I'd like to do, given my background, is I'd like to understand how to make government, Ada County government, efficient and effective. How do we figure out the programs that are not necessary anymore that can be eliminated, the services that people want that they're not getting today? And, and once we put all of that information together, the money that's left over from being better, and more efficient, more effective, and delivering the services that people want, anything that's left over after that, I think should be given back in tax relief. But I don't think that it makes sense for us to say, oh, we're going to give you a 20% tax cut. Because when we do that, in an arbitrary fashion, we underfund things like a new patrol car, right? You know, patrol car goes, what, a couple hundred thousand miles, its useful life, and that's about a year to 15 months-ish or so, give or take. When we make the decision to give you back 20% of your taxes, we decide not to give a sheriff's deputy a new vehicle, or an adequate vehicle that's adequate. And I don't want us to do that. I want us to be smart about how we do it. So that's the first thing. Second thing that I'd like to focus on is public safety. You know, we, we didn't get the bond passed for the new jail in the last election. It was very close to passing. I've talked with Sheriff Clifford, and what I'd like to do is put a two-year plan in place where we figure out what the real needs are for the county going forward, and we put another proposal into, within two years, on the ballot, that people can look at and understand that that proposal solves the problem for a generation, right? We would like, I would like, to see us think about problems from a generational standpoint, right? What's going to look like 30 years from now, 40 years from, 50 years from now? Let's go and solve the problem, in particular, of public safety, with a long-term view in mind. We want to be tough on crime. I want to be tough on crime. I don't like crime. I would like to see it go away. The reality is, is that if we're going to be tough on crime, we have to invest in the infrastructure to support the results of being tough on crime.
MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast, and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com. I'm so, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm so happy that you are saying this, because the idea that we can be tough, it's, it's like child rearing. People are like, oh, I'm going to be very strict with my kids. Okay, well, that's going to take a lot of energy. And I'm not saying you shouldn't be strict with your kids, but if you're going to be strict and hold the line every single time, and like lay out consequences, you're going to be getting up from every single meal. You're going to be putting down every single cup of coffee, because your kid's going to do something wrong, and you're going to have to invest that time. Well, from a law enforcement standpoint, naturally, if you want to be tough on crime, you need engaged and populated law enforcement agencies, be that a police department or sheriff's office. And then when you are tough on crime, you also need jails and prisons to house these people and distribute justice. Like, it requires an investment. And the idea that you're going to get better or more effective law enforcement while stripping budgets, it's like, oh, gosh.
Yeah, so, I said this in the fire race last fall, and I'll repeat it again here. People want to make sure that when they dial 911, the absolute best-trained, best-equipped people show up at the scene to deal with the situation. That's what they're paying for. And when we make arbitrary cuts, and we don't consider the implications, in this case, on, on public safety, then we're doing, actually doing a disservice, right? As a county commission, we are responsible for making sure that the right services are delivered in the best possible way for people in the county, everybody in the county, whether you live in a city, or you live in unincorporated Ada County. And I think that we have to be smart about how we consider the decisions that we make and the implications of those decisions. Another thing we talked about last time is, you know, my world is not black and white. You know, it's not, you're not always right, you're not always wrong. The reality is, most decisions are very complex, and the solution is somewhere in the middle. And what we don't do enough of anymore, in my opinion, is we don't, we don't talk about those things and get to the details. We, we talk in soundbites around the real issue. And what I would like for us to do is take a different approach. My entire career has been about finding out what's really going on, that what people think is going on, proving what's going on by having the data, or the numbers, or the budget, or the spend, or whatever. And then using the, the information that we have about what's really going on to decide what we want to do differently, if we want to do anything different at all. And I'd like to bring that approach to the, to, to the commission. My third priority is something I call smart growth. You know, we're projected, we've had 110,000 people who have come into the Treasure Valley in the last 10 years, not the Treasure Valley, into Ada County in the last 10 years. There's a projection that says that the population growth between now and 2050 will actually exceed a million people in Ada County. Most of that growth is going to occur in the, the egg, if you will, that's made up of Meridian, Eagle, Starr, Middleton, Caldwell, and Nampa. So it looks kind of an egg on the map.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Okay, most of it's in unincorporated Ada County right now. But that's where the vast majority of the growth is going to occur in the, in, in the county. And what I'd like to see us do is, I would like to see the commission work with the cities, and with Compass, and with ACHD, to make sure that when we decide to put 5,000 homes in location XYZ in unincorporated Ada County, that everybody's on board with the plan and the infrastructure plan, to make sure that we, we've got water coverage, and we've got traffic covered, and we've got police and fire services capable of covering those areas. Growth for the sake of growth is actually bad long-term.
Sure.
Right? We have to be smart about making sure that, that we're, the government agencies are working together in Ada County to bring growth that makes sense to places where it can be supported. And I don't think that we have done a good job in Ada County's history, and I'm not pointing to anybody in particular, I'm just saying, in our history. We haven't done very well by saying, if we don't build it, they won't come. That, that doesn't work. What we, I think we have to do is, we have to look beyond the horizon. We have to look around the corner. And we have to envision what the world of Ada County is going to look like, 2050, 2075, 2100, right? And we need to be, we need to ensure that the growth that occurs is growth that allows people to continue to move around the county the way they want to, and live and work in a safe community. And so, when a project comes before the commission, I'm, I'm going to be asking a lot of detailed questions about what this thing looks like 30 years from now, 40 years from now, 50 years from now, and whether or not we've solved those problems or thought about them.
Man, those are three big priorities. Thank you for aligning that stuff. Do you mind if we just start picking off, you know, one, okay, okay. So, let's start with, I think you started with taxes. Let's start with taxes. Taxes are a big thing. I had a discussion with a friend just the other day. I live in unincorporated Ada County, and I pay, you know, about half of taxes, of property taxes, compared to what he pays. We have similarly valued homes. He lives in Boise City, and I don't. And that's a big consideration for people, because he was saying, hey, why am I, why am I paying twice as much as you? And the answer is, well, you're getting twice as much, you know, proportionally. Like, you live in different schooling zones, you live in different fire districts, you live in, you know, you have different parks and whatnot. But there are problems there too, because the parks he pays for, I get, you're not looking for a wristband when you go to a park. So, he's funding public parks within the city that, that I get to take advantage of as an unincorporated citizen or resident. What do we do with property taxes? Because to, to some degree, that seems unfair, right? That he would, he would be getting the, he'd be footing the bill for these things, and I get to use them. But it's also very complex, because again, the city has different costs than unincorporated. And again, for instance, police service, he gets, you know, the Boise Police Department, I don't. So my, my, my police service comes from the sheriff's office, whereas he gets the sheriff's office and the police, police department. So, he gets enhanced services in different areas. How do we resolve this? How do we resolve, how do we address the fact that we've had, over the last few years, a surplus of money? Some people are saying, hey, we're taking too much property tax revenue, we should, and again, I know you said we shouldn't do a blanket cut. Some people are advocating that that's the right idea, or that we do a small blanket cut and then really reassess things. How do we, how do we start addressing the increase of property taxes?
Yeah, so, let me just make sure I'm, I'm clear. I don't disagree with doing an across-the-board, small cut. I think that that might be appropriate to, to the point that you just made. I just want us to understand what the implications are of that on the operation of the county before we, before we make that decision. To your question, property taxes are incredibly complex. There are a number of drivers. You mentioned some of them. The, the legislature has set up the ability for taxing districts to exist and overlap across the state. Why does your, your friends, why is your friend's taxes, or why are your friend's taxes higher than yours? It's, as you stated, he's living in a different taxing district. He may have three or four taxing entities that tap into his property taxes, or drive his property taxes, and you have one or two. It's the, it's the nature of the way it's been designed. I think what needs to happen in Idaho overall is, we need to reassess and create more consistent taxing policies, so that we're better spreading the service that we actually deliver, and that that matches the cost that people pay. To your point, we're not going to put a wristband on you for XYZ Park out there, but, but we probably should be taxing you, because you have access to that, and you will use it. Same thing with the, with the roads, right? So, it, so it's incredibly complex, and I think that we need to rethink the way we do it. That's not an issue that we have at the commission level. Unfortunately, that's a, that's, you know, state, you know, state legislatures. And I hope that at some point, that we can have real, meaningful property tax reform, that's not just a mechanism for trying to give money back to people, but it really reassesses the approach that we take to, to tax people in a more consistent way. We have incredibly small counties in Idaho, a few thousand people. And then we've got Ada County that's got 400, 500,000 people, and is going to have a million people in the next, you know, 25, 30 years. Should the taxing districts look the same in Ada County as they do in Pika County, right? The answer is probably no, but the, but the tax code can be set up so that it's more consistent and more fair, certainly in a place like the Treasure Valley.
Gotcha, gotcha. With regard to unincorporated development, because this is, again, you're talking about smart growth, and we're kind of comparing taxing between unincorporated versus city. Unincorporated Ada County has a lot of room to develop master plan communities, like the one we're sitting in right now. There, there are issues though, because again, we aren't paying taxes to cities, but we get the benefits of that. And yeah, it would be great if the legislator or the county could work together and figure out a more equal way. But do you think that there needs to be more unincorporated development? Do you think that's something that should be incentivized? Or do you think that that's something that should be used sparingly, and just allow, allow cities to slowly annex inland and develop it as they go?
So, so cities typically tend to not want to annex land until some development is started, or there's some plan for it. So I think most of the growth that's going to occur is actually going to be growth that's driven by Ada County, in those unincorporated areas, right? It'll be the county commissioners, not, not necessarily cities. I mean, you look at, and I'm going to pick on the place that I live in, Avamore was in unincorporated Ada County, and was just annexed into Eagle. Huge fight. But the reality was, is that when they set the project up 20 years ago, it was all managed through, and the decision-making was, was managed at the county commission level for three different counties. That's who approved Avamore. We're going to go through the Avamore model another, what, 20, 30, 40 times, over the course of the next 50 years. So I don't, I would not see the cities being the drivers of what happens in unincorporated Ada County, and I would not see them going out and doing advanced annexation, or annexation earlier than, than they would normally be able to recognize revenue that could offset services that the city then has to provide.
That makes perfect sense. Got it.
So I think the county, whether we like it or not, the county is going to be the driver for at least the next 40, 50 years, for the major growth, for the next half a million people that come here. And so, that's why I think that the county commission, I think it's important for the county commission, when they look at a project, to consider, you know, what is the, what is the Compass long-term plan say? What is ACHD's long-term plan say? What, what do the long-term plans of Meridian, and Eagle, and Nampa, and Caldwell, and Middleton, what do they say? And I'm not sure that we've done a really, I'm not sure that we've done a good enough job of that historically, and I'd like to see us do that better. Can I, can I change that all by myself? Probably not. Can I start down the path of trying to do it? I absolutely can. Can I be passionate about making sure that we try to talk to everybody that we can in the areas that are impacted before we approve a project? I think I can. And so, I want to try and do my part, so that when my grandchildren's grandchildren are out on the roads in Ada County, they're not complaining that they're over congested, or they haven't been built well enough, that there are too many houses that back up to those roads. Now, the commission doesn't do roads.
Right.
That's ACHD.
Right.
But we should be looking as governmental entities as a whole, at what are the best solutions, so that when my grandchildren's grandchildren are driving their kids to school, they're driving on a road that works, that has a traffic pattern that works, they're able to actually do what they need to do, and they don't look at it, look at their, their surroundings.
Right.
And think, I wish somebody had done this better, or differently, right? If they're happy, and they're not complaining, meaning my grandchildren's grandchildren are not complaining about the place they live in, then I've done a good job in my time of service.
Got it. And that, your explanation of how the county will ultimately be driving city growth by designing and then allowing people to annex in, that makes perfect sense. That hadn't been explained to me before. Yeah, okay, got it. Let's talk about public safety, and this one is obviously very near, near and dear to everybody in Ada County as of late, and it should be always. But there, there are a number of issues, right? We, we have exploding population, we have restrictions on how much the budget can increase, we have a jail bond that did not pass, we have, you know, a kitchen in the jail that's rated for 1,000 meals a day, and it's functioning at 3,000 meals a day. We have a lot of these issues, and a lot of them come down to funding for function. What do we do?
So, I think we need to realize that the, the rate of crime in Ada County is not substantially different than it was 10 years ago. But we added 110,000 people. So, when you keep the crime rate the same, and you add 110,000 people, the number of calls and the number of crimes that the people have to, to, or dress, if you're the sheriff's department, for example, that's going to go up. And what I don't think that we did effectively in the last bond, was explain to people why we needed to do the work we needed to do. Why is the jail different in Ada County than it is someplace else? So, great example. We get prisoners from the state. The state pays Ada County to house those prisoners, while they're being adjudicated before they go to, onto their next stop in, in the system, right? The, the money that the legislature allots for a prisoner, covers the cost of that prisoner, let's say, in Bonner County just fine, but it doesn't in Ada County. And so, we actually lose money on every prisoner that comes and stays in the Ada County jail.
So Ada County, so what you're saying is that Ada County Jail is in effect subsidizing the state to manage prisoners?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, and so what I think we need to do is, we need to do a more effective job. So, so let's assume that the solution that we came up with the last time was good, or was good enough, okay? I'd like to revisit that, and work with the sheriff to really answer that question. But let's assume it was good enough. I think what we didn't explain to people was the, the criticality, and the, and the need, and the fact that we're really at an inflection point, in terms of what we're going to do with prisoners for the next 30, 40 years, right? The last time we did anything major to the jail was back in the 90s. So we have a 30-year-old jail. If we pass a bond before we start work, it's going to be a 40-year-old jail. What are we going to do to try and address that in the most effective way? And how do we communicate that to people, so that they don't think about it like, you're just increasing my taxes? Well, yeah, we're increasing your taxes, but keep in mind, we want a safe community for our families, and for our kids and grandkids and great-grandkids to grow up in. This is a generational problem, and we need to think about how to create a generational solution. And guess what? Being tough on crime costs money. And, and we have to be smart about how we communicate that. Jails are, jails are interesting. The people who use them, and the people who need them, are not the people who pay for them. And so, you're asking people to pay for something that they don't use, and when you do, they have a hard time seeing value. And I think in the last cycle, we didn't do enough to communicate to people how the investment in public safety is actually in their benefit. How does this benefit, and what's the value that accrues to them as a result of making this investment in the future? And what I would like to do is work with the chief, and we've talked about this. Not only do we want to come up with the right solution, but we want to come up with a plan to communicate it in the right way, so that people can understand this, and understand that if we're going to be tough on crime, this is a solution, or the solution that is being proposed, that we think is best, and we've considered all of these other options, and this is why we think this is best. And here's the value to you, of having us do this. And I think it can be done. I think we can come up with a solution. I mean, we're smart people. If we take and, and, you know, put logic around this, and data around this, and then effectively communicate it to people, I think people will support it. Because I think most people want a safe community, and most people want to be tough on crime. And so, we just, I think as, as a commission, well, as a commission and as leaders in the community, I think we all can do a better job of communicating what the role of the county jail is, not just in the county, but in each of the cities that are served, and the context for the, the, the state.
Right. Yeah, and to your point, getting information out. The number of people that I spoke with when the jail bond was on the ballot, that said, hey, look, these are criminals, we just need to let them, you know, sleep on the floor and eat, you know, breadcrumbs. Articulating to them, you, you do realize that jails are places where we hold people that have been accused and are going through the judicial system. These are not necessarily convicts. Now, that's not to say that there aren't people serving time in the jail, there absolutely are. But a lot of the people that get convicted of, say, like, a felony, are then transported to prisons, right? Which is not the jail. The jail is essentially a transient housing option that keeps people very secure. And making that a worse condition is, one, making it a worse condition for men and women that are innocent until proven guilty, and it makes it a far more dangerous condition for those working in the jail, who are not accused of any crime at all. They literally are just showing up to work. So if you have people that are now overcrowded, getting improperly-produced food, like, just in, in much more risky situations, you have people that are literally like locked in rooms with prisoners, that are trying to keep order, that could, great harm could be dealt to them. And they haven't done anything except signed up to keep us safe, be part of the mechanism that prevents criminals from escaping. You also have a far more, a far greater likelihood of escape when you're transporting people. I remember speaking with Sheriff Clifford last year, he was saying, look, in our, in our loading dock, we literally have pallets of like printer paper, and all kinds of other things that we're storing, because we don't have room to store those in the jail. And they also have off-site storage facilities and things of this nature. It's like, gosh, man, the functioning of this place, you guys are really holding it together. And that's, again, a piece of explaining to people, look, the jail system is not housing, like, you know, just a bunch of, you know, one-time marijuana users. 80, I think it's something like 80% of the people there are felons. And then the other people are high-risk individuals, and there are all kinds of programs to relieve the pressure on the system with, you know, less violent offenders that are serving their time on the weekends, or whatever it is. But again, it's, it's how, I very much agree with you. There's, there's a large education play that needs to be done with, hey, this is how our jail actually functions. This is how it works into your lifestyle in our community. This is what we're doing. This is how we're making do with what we have. But at some point, as you're pointing out, if you're going to be tough on crime, it's going to cost. You're going to have to spend money.
Yeah, and where do you want to spend your money, right? You mentioned that we're storing things in off-site storage, and we're storing them on the loading dock, and we're, think about the resources that it takes to manage all of that chaos, right? And if we put a better process and better infrastructure in place, we solve some of those process problems that allows that money that we're spending on those resources to manage the chaos, to actually go out and face off with the public, and help make the community a better place. And so, I mentioned before, we need to look at how the processes of government work, fix those processes, make them more efficient, invest where we need to, in new services, or eliminate services that are no longer effective, make the things that we're delivering more effective, so that, in this particular case, law enforcement can focus on law enforcement and public safety, and not focus on how they're managing the chaos that we've created, because we haven't taken a long-term view and given them the right process. I've said this many times, I've told you this several times. I think that we do a disservice to the people that we ask to serve, police, fire, EMS, whatever. I think we do a disservice when we give them a broken process in inadequate equipment, and yet we say to them, go protect us.
Right.
When you show up with that, you know, when the ambulance rolls, and the EM, you know, the EMTs show up at your house, you don't want to pay for that, because you don't see the value until those folks roll into your, you know, into your living room, and save your life.
Right.
And I think we do a disservice to all of those men and women that we ask to do those jobs, by not thinking about the best way to, the best way to provide them with what they need to be effective in their jobs. And I, and I'm, I've always been a big believer that we don't do enough for the, for our first responders. I'm super focused on making sure that I do my part to do what's right for the first responders. But I, anyway, I, I think that we have to be smart about the processes that we give them, and give them things that are workable, so that they're actually able to focus on the job that we hired them to do.
Understood. Canyon County is going through a big wrangle with EMS services, because essentially what's happened is, the Canyon County has grown substantially, there are all kinds of asks and calls coming, they can't increase their budget, proportional with inflation, and, and things of that nature. That's not a great situation to be in. What, what can Ada County do to continue supporting, to say, the EMS services, like ambulance drivers and whatnot, and making sure that the people that are living, for instance, in unincorporated Ada County specifically, are getting proper response times and things of that nature?
This is a super complicated issue.
Yes.
This is not a, well, let's just, let's just go do this, and it'll fix it.
Right.
You know, there's mandates from the state, that the county has to provide certain services. You know, what I would like to do when I get elected, is, I would like to look and see what the options are for considering a different model. Why do we need a separate EMS district for Canyon County, from Ada County, from, you know, you name it? Is there an opportunity for us to look at a private-public partnership? You know, you, you look at it, when you have multiple entities operating in multiple counties, you have multiple overhead. Are we really adding value by having multiple overhead, because we have multiple districts and multiple agencies? Would it be possible for us, say, for example, we have two large nonprofit health systems in, in the county, in Ada and Canyon County, would it be possible for us to do a public-private partnership that would give us the ability to spread the infrastructure across larger companies, and better integrate the healthcare system? People, people think of the ambulance, or the, the EMS service, as being separate from the health system. I don't agree with that. I, I think that when, when they show up and put you on the gurney, right? They stick a needle in your arm, or whatever, save your life, or whatever, and they, and they put you in the ambulance, you have actually entered the healthcare system.
Right. You're in a mobile hospital to keep you alive until you get there.
That's correct. But we don't view it that way. We, we view it as a separate entity that must stand alone. I don't agree with that. I, I think that the healthcare system starts when you I, I think that the healthcare system starts when you engage and should be consistent through the time when you no longer need it. Say, in this case, an event, you have a heart attack or you, you know, have a cut or something, you know, that requires transportation, some, you know, major event that requires transportation. Right now, what happens is EMS hands you off to the hospital, the hospital hands you off, the hospital hands you off, blah, 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 right? On, on down the road. And I would like to see in the case of the ambulance services and EMS services, I would like to see them better integrated from an organizational standpoint with the healthcare system in Ada and Canyon County. And I would like to see Ada and Canyon County better organized and better aligned to be a single delivery entity for health services in the region versus having these independents.
Wow, that's a big, that's a big bite.
So, so, so look, here's what's going to-
And by the way, I'm not criticizing it, it's just I, nobody has presented that idea, which is, hey, look, we need to work together, not just within the county, but intra-county connections.
So we've discussed this before, I've, I've been all over the world and worked all over the world. There's going to come a time in southwestern Idaho where we can't afford to have nine fire districts and two county commissions and somebody who handles roads and somebody who does this and the, at some point, it's going to become unworkable. And that includes the emergency services that we, that we provide. When that point comes, what we'll end up doing is we will regionalize. Think of, and this might be a bad example, but Miami-Dade. Think about some of the areas in Canada that have formed regional governments to try and address regional problems versus trying to let individual communities or cities or whatever try and solve those problems. We will get there eventually. Won't be in my lifetime or your lifetime, but our kids, kids likely are going to be observing some form of consolidation and change in the way we govern in southwestern Idaho just because it's going to become unmanageable. To me, given that we already know that we have an issue with EMS, both in Canyon and Ada Counties, I think that what we ought to do is consider that in the future, we're going to have better aligned, fewer governmental entities in southwestern Idaho, and we should start to move the healthcare system, in this case EMS, into a model that looks like what the future is likely going to be.
Gosh, man, you lay it out in a really articulate way. I, I had not, I'd not considered any of that. But then again, I'm not you considering my kids' kids in the same way in planning. One more big thing is the recreation and management of populat-, not management of populations, but management of the recreational outlets for the population like Expo Idaho. What do we do to continue ensuring, one of the things that I love, let me put it this way, one of the things I absolutely love about this area is that there's a substantial non-trivial investment in improving the quality of life of the local citizens. You know, like you have the, the water park, you have, you know, Expo Idaho, you have-
Trails, the trail system.
Oh, it's fantastic. The rivers, the whole thing, right? What do we do with this? Do we, are we investing enough? You know, Expo Idaho is kind of a beast of its own. Some people have proposed developing Expo Idaho. What do we do?
So, so we, we live in incredible place.
Yeah.
I mean, people who come here, me, you.
Incredible.
You know, we come here and we're like, why are we living in Dallas or Chicago or New York? What, what are we thinking? Why aren't we here? Why aren't we coming? So I'd answer your question this way. I think that we've done an outstanding job of giving people those outlets, parks, the rivers, the trails, the, all the things that you, that you mentioned. The biggest thing I want to, I want us to not do is screw that up.
Yeah.
Okay?
I appreciate where you're coming from.
Okay. So, so, you know, as a, as a steward that's being handed a solution that is fantastic among the best in the country, I think it's my responsibility not to mess that up. I mentioned before that when we, that we have to be smart in the way we grow. Part of the infrastructure that we have to maintain and we can't let slip are all of those things that you mentioned, right? So when we go and build new subdivisions or we build new communities or we build something in, in the unincorporated parts of the state, we need to consider those recreational things because people move to Idaho for lifestyle, right? There aren't that many people who move to Idaho because they're going to get rich beyond their wildest imaginations, right? They come here because it's a great place to live, it's a great place to raise their kids, it's a great place for them to recreate and have recreation and other activities that make up a lifestyle. So I want to make sure we don't screw that up.
Right. Hey, listen, I, I think this is one of the most, the least understood aspects of when people move here. It's like, I think the, I think the fishing game industry and recreational industry is the second largest industry in the entire state, clocks in at like seven or eight billion dollars overall. Because as you're pointing out, people move here for the lifestyle. They're not, you know, other places that, you know, places similar to where I moved from, which were incubators for wealth. They, they were not designed to make you happy, they were not designed to, to give you a good quality of life. They were designed to make you a dump truck of money and you sacrificed your life for that. And it, it appears that this community has not wanted or engaged in that type of trade-off. They're like, no, 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 let's, let's still make life here as great as possible, and to the extent you can make money, make money, whatever. But the priority was, at least appears to me over the last 50 years, look, how can we make life here tolerable? Not just tolerable, but actually quality, which is, which is great. So yeah, keeping, keeping control of that.
You know, you, you think about Idaho over the last 50 years, I don't think there was a, there was a plan that was ever put in place in the twenties, thirties, forties that said, we want to be the nation's recreation Mecca and we want to be the place that people want to come to for the next 150, 200 years. That said, I think we did an outstanding job as a state to create a place that people want to live in. And there's, there are people out there who are looking, who are going to come. And it's not a trickle. It's going to continue to be the flood that we've seen over the last 10 years. That won't stop for another 30, 40, 50 years. And so I think we have to work really, really hard to maintain this place that we've been given by the people who came before us and make sure that it continues to be that place that people want to come to.
Yeah, I agree with it. And there's an aspect of agency and intentionality that has produced, for instance, I had a wonderful individual, a resident of Eagle by the name of Burke Mantel on, and I, I found him because he was on Facebook talking about open, open land and, you know, BLM land and kids laying waste to it, and he'd contacted me because he was very passionate about it, so I had him on. And he, in like 1981, he moved here and introduced wild turkeys to the state of Idaho, and there were apparently like 40 turkeys, and somebody in fishing games was like, you found one? Like where did, can you go talk to these like biologists, you know? And, and now we have something between 30 and 50,000 turkeys and it's a great season and people very much enjoy it, but that was an intentionality. And it was, it was a capacity to say, okay, look, let's add this awesome thing and let's work together and, and populate the, these areas with this, with this animal that everybody's going to enjoy hunting. And again, I think you do that enough times and you have just an incredible place that people, people want to, want to come live in.
That's a great instance where we didn't overthink the problem, we didn't over-regulate the problem, and we allowed people to do something that was not harmful and it made sense, right? And you mentioned intentionality. I do think that there has been a generational intentionality to have less government and less oversight. Perfect, yours is a perfect example and there's probably thousands more out there and there will be many thousands of more to come.
Right. Clyde, we've talked about a lot of things. We've had a lot of-
We always do.
We do. Is there anything with miss, is there anything you want to hit on specifically about you or about the area or your campaign?
You know, I think I'm different than the other people that are running. I'm different from, from my opponent in that I think I bring a different perspective. I bring a, a long-term vision for what I would like things to look like. I'm very much focused on the legacy that I leave for my grandchildren's grandchildren. I've got a lot of experience working in businesses and understand how processes work. You know, I think a focus on people, policy and process is one that will benefit government. And I think I'm uniquely qualified to be the guy that can do that. And you know what? I, I really am passionate about, about this job, I'm passionate about the county, and I would like to, you know, when my time ends in service to the county, have people say that we moved the needle to the good. We did something positive. We, we grew something, we did something, we have positive results, things are better than, than the way we left them. And I really, I really firmly believe that I can make a difference. Can I? I don't know, who knows? Let's talk two years from now when I'm, you know, when I'm running again, whether or not we've made, we've made a difference, but I hope that we can.
Well, thank you for what you're doing. I, I really appreciated our initial conversation when you were running for fire commission, and I've enjoyed this one as well. I appreciate the issues you bring to the table, your perspective on things and just doing what you can to help add integrity to all of these campaigns. Because again, I find you to be an incredibly respectful individual. So thank you for what you're doing, win, lose or draw, thanks for participating.
Thanks for, thanks for the time, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. I always, I love coming to talk with you.
MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast, and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com.